Merci d'avoir rappelé un certain nombre de événements que nous avons eu. Et merci à tous d'être ici aujourd'hui. Je voudrais vous féliciter, Mme Rockinier, pour devenir maître. Je sais que c'est une énorme quantité de travail à ajouter à ce que vous faites déjà en tant qu'homme. Merci d'avoir pris le temps de l'assister. Je sais que vous avez soutenu le soutien de la CAFLAC. J'attends de très bons résultats en 2016. C'est un moment excitant pour moi de me tenir ici comme ma première responsabilité officielle, de réduire la CAFLAC comme membre de l'État. Mon but principal dans cette présentation, et je suis désolée que mon dos soit à vous, je pense que c'est pas une bonne façon de se tenir. Mon but principal dans cette présentation est de vous assurer que vous êtes tous au courant de la collaboration que j'ai voulu faire avec vous et vos communautés. Je veux souligner juste quelques domaines, en tenant compte que c'est des premiers jours pour nous comme gouvernement. Nous allons développer plusieurs domaines dans les mois à venir. Mais je voulais toucher à quelques choses, des domaines qui sont, comme je dirai, de concernance mutuelle. Dans mon nouveau rôle comme secrétaire parlementaire du ministère des ressources naturelles, je m'occupe de tout, de l'huile à l'éclaireur nucléaire. Je suis très excite de participer à ce nouveau rôle. Et je suis sûre que vous donnerez de bons conseils sur certaines choses que je devrais souligner pour le ministère. Tout d'abord, je veux parler de l'infrastructure. Comme gouvernement, nous avons commis la plus grande investition d'infrastructure dans l'histoire canadienne, 125 milliards de dollars en plus de 10 ans. Nous reconnaissons, et il y a eu une discussion plus tôt sur le déficit d'infrastructure, nous reconnaissons la importance de l'infrastructure. Et nous savons que les communautés, en particulier les petites communautés rurales, ne peuvent pas commencer à supporter ces coûts. Comme ces mois sont mis en place dans les mois à venir et dans les années à venir, nous pouvons travailler collaborativement pour nous assurer que nous pouvons accéder à notre part entière ici dans le County de Northumberland. Et j'ai déjà entendu des commentaires de vous, en fait, j'ai demandé à certains d'entre vous de venir avec quelques idées. J'attends ça, comme je l'ai dit, dans les prochains mois. Dans le domaine de la habitation sociale, dont on a aussi parlé ce matin, nous voulons être leaders comme gouvernement. Nous proposerons notre nouveau rôle fédéral. Et je veux être clair sur ce rôle fédéral dans la habitation, incluant des investissements et des programmes innovants pour la soutenance à la habitation. Nous parlons beaucoup des seniors et des personnes avec des disabilities et de la façon dont nous pouvons être inclus dans nos plans de habitation. Predictable et soutenir de nouveaux fonds pour la habitation affordable. Predictable étant un ordre optimal, planifier prend du temps et vous devez savoir où vient le argent et quand il vient. L'affronter la carence dans la habitation requiert une collaboration entre les niveaux de gouvernement pour soutenir le financement et la construction d'une nouvelle habitation à prix convenable à partir de l'argent. Les parties prenantes ont demandé au gouvernement de faire un engagement de 10 ans pour la habitation affordable. Donc, comme nous avançons, c'est le cadre avec lequel nous avançons. En termes de développement économique, c'est vraiment le point de fond des communautés locales ici dans le County de Northumberland. Nous créons des opportunités d'emploi qui sont à long terme, pas à court terme, et part time, temporaires. Nous sommes une partie de l'économie globale comme nous le savons. Et cela signifie que nous devons nous concentrer sur l'attraction d'innovations, de petits marchés niche d'opportunités d'entreprise. Et encore une fois, j'ai eu plusieurs conversations avec vous sur ce que cela ressemble et comment nous pouvons travailler ensemble pour que cela se passe. Comme gouvernement, nous voulons être partenaires dans la création et l'attraction de ces opportunités. Nous avons commis d'investir 200 millions de dollars chaque année dans une nouvelle agenda d'innovation pour largement étendre le soutien pour les incumulateurs et accélérateurs. Et dans le County de Northumberland, nous avons été leaders dans cette région. As well as the emerging national network for business innovation and cluster support. Et nous parlerons beaucoup plus de ça. As well as investing an additional 100 million dollars in each year in the industrial research assistance program. Which has a proven track record of helping small and medium sized businesses to innovate and become world leaders. The third area I want to talk a little bit about is healthcare. We will make home care more available, prescription drugs more affordable, and mental health care more accessible. Canada's publicly funded universal healthcare system is a source of pride for all Canadians and a source of economic security for the middle class and those working hard to join it. When Canadians are in good physical and mental health, they are able to work better, be more productive, and contribute more fully to our economy while living healthier and happier lives. Despite our healthcare systems' value and importance, it has been more than a decade since the Canadian prime minister sat down with provincial and territorial premiers to strengthen the program and ensure that it can meet current needs and the challenges that come with our aging population. And we know in the County of Northumberland, we are experiencing that to a degree that not many other communities in Ontario are. We will restart that important conversation and provide the collaborative federal leadership that has been missing during the last decade. We will negotiate a new healthcare accord with provinces and territories, including a long-term agreement for funding. As an immediate commitment, we will invest 3 billion dollars over the next four years to deliver more and better home care services for all Canadians. Again, going back to the demographics of this county. Going back to the demographics of this county, I see this is a really important piece for us. This includes more access to high quality in-home caregivers, financial supports for family care, and when necessary, palliative care. To help families care for their loved ones at home, we will make the employment insurance compassionate, care benefit, more flexible and easier to access, so that it provides more than just end-of-life care. We will also develop a pan-Canadian collaboration on health innovation and will improve access to necessary prescription medications. We will also join with provincial and territorial governments to buy drugs in bulk, reducing the cost Canadian governments pay for these drugs and making them more affordable to Canadians. And a lot of people didn't realize that every province right now was negotiating the cost of drugs individually. And as a country, we frankly have more buying power and it makes complete sense to me. We will make high-quality mental health services more available to Canadians who need them, including our veterans and first responders. We will eliminate systemic barriers and deliver equality of opportunity to all Canadians living with disabilities. We will consult provinces, territories, and other stakeholders, including our first nations, to introduce the National Disabilities Act. Going forward, my goal is to work with Lou, who is without question an inspiration to me in how to work with municipal partners in getting things done. I think we have lots of examples of that over the last number of years. I too believe in getting things done by working in partnership, not isolation. I'm here to serve you and the constituents of this riding. I'm here to help in whatever way I can. I'm very proud of the team in my office, led by my senior advisor, Michael Gray, who has almost 20 years' experience working here in Northumberland on a variety of municipal and economic development issues. I also want to say that we are very pleased to have a number of people within the riding that have been responding to the 100 to 200 phone calls and emails a day we have been receiving since October 20. The outreach and assistance required by our constituents has been quite overwhelming. In closing, I'd like to thank you for having me here today. I sincerely hope and trust that this is the beginning of a very fruitful working relationship with both the county and Normandy municipalities individually. Also, we'll be shortly announcing the grand opening of our office in Coburg. And we will be deciding what to do regarding further office setups, mobile offices, we believe, in the riding. So I wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and a safe and happy holiday season. Thank you. And I'm happy to take questions.
We certainly appreciate that you touched on many topics that are very important to the County of Northumberland. And I do know that, you know, as a founder of a childcare service, a provider of education in the county, and also as a former chair of the Physician Recruitment Committee, Kim, you definitely know what is important to the County of Northumberland. So I have every faith that you will continue to serve as well. But I am going to open up to other members of council, councillor Melchon.
Thank you, Kim, for your presentation. And as you can see, we need funding desperately in our municipalities.
Right, you're right.
Including our own cell system, as you can see. Just some questions on the funding. Any ideas of when some of that's going to become available? Is it going to be available this year for budgeting purposes, that kind of thing? Or is it something a little further down the line?
Some of the things we've announced, the tax cut for middle-class families, we did have a motion put through for second and third party on one day to get that done for January 1st. Most of the rest will have to come around budget. And Mr. Bill Morno and his team are just to embark on Across Canada, 12 days, I believe, to talk to Canadians, municipalities, etc., about what their needs, their wants, or visions are. There's a little bit of a hiccup with that right now. In order to do that, we need the unanimous consent of the House. And the 10 block members have blocked us from putting that forward. So there's lots of negotiation talking going on right now. So I will keep you up to date, but I anticipate towards the end of February, beginning of March.
Thank you for the presentation. I think we're very excited about the changes that are coming forward. And I know from the perspective we have that, you know, there's a lot of requests are coming your way. We're going to be asking you for a lot of things. And I'd just like to remind you that we're here to support you too. So this is a tourist stream, and we're very excited about that.
Thank you.
Councillor Rawls.
Thank you, Warden, Markinier. Kim, congratulations on both your win and your appointment. I just wonder if you could share some comments on the new committee that has been struck with regard to Syrian refugees.
Certainly. I do want to give an acknowledgement to the county and particularly Indian in terms of their work with the Syrian Refugee Committee. We recognized very early on, when I talked about the number of phone calls and emails that we've had, that this, that our community was stepping up in a big way. And it became a bit of a... Organizational challenge to some degree. Organizational challenge to some degree. And I've been in touch and had conversations with Mr. Callum as well as his parliamentary secretary, Reeve Brani, about the process of Jane Philpott, Dr. Jane Philpott, who is the Minister of Health and the chair of the Syrian Refugee Committee federally. And what we recognize is that every individual community is different in terms of what their needs are, what their individual capabilities are. So what we've done is we have been a partner with the larger committee, which is led by the county, and has brought in enough of the faith groups and other... It's not just the faith groups, there are actually community organizations and individual people that have come together. And we have committed to bringing a, once we're at the point where we sort of have a very good handle on, we're bringing a, let's call them an expert from the ministry to the next meeting in January to sit down and answer those questions that we haven't been able to get answers to. Having said that, we do outline in as an MP, and we've been using it for the questions that we've been getting. I am so proud of our community and the work and the outpouring of compassion and support that's come from this riding. It's phenomenal.
Any other comments or questions? Sorry, councillor McMillan.
Well, I wasn't going to address this, but seeing that Mark kind of thought it was a subject. Well, congratulations on your win and certainly on your appointment, Kim. I know you'll do the best for us. And I don't expect any answers from you on this point, at this time anyway. And it's no secret that some of us have had concerns with regards to the federal government bringing in refugees from Syria. And now I see things are backing up in Toronto, according to CDB. Last night, our moving community is pulling their hair out because the people are being stacked up in the buildings. They're coming in so fast. And part of that, I guess, is because of the province's commitment, which they get receiving those monies for housing. So this all goes to affordable housing. And we're bringing in people who, don't get me wrong, desperately need help. They need a hand up. But we certainly have our share of Canadians who have been here for generations who need a hand up. And seniors who have done their time, who are facing the increasing costs that they probably hadn't expected. Obviously, they had not expected with the cost of electricity and energy and everything else that's going up. And I like your idea, the concept of the provinces getting together to form a larger volume group for drugs. And hopefully, put some of these drug manufacturers in their place when it comes to the cost of manufacturing drugs and then truly what they are really worth, their retail value. My big concern is for homelessness, poverty, the treaty violations that Canadians have been committing for generations, and just our own social problems in our own backyard. And again, just so that I'm clear, I support Canadians doing what Canadians have always done, and that's to help others when they need a hand up. But I firmly believe that we're not doing a good enough job in helping out our Canadians that are here now. And I would hope that your government will take that on very seriously. I listened quite carefully to our prime minister's words last night with regards to the Jewish reconciliation study that was conducted. And I was happy with his remarks, because certainly these atrocities were not committed on his shift. So I hope that there will be some major work putting into getting Canadians back up to speed, and the sooner the better. So like I say, I'm not looking for any answers to those questions. It's a lot of work there. But I just hope to see some work on it, and I'll be watching. And I can certainly tell you a lot of people are.
Thank you, Hector. I will just comment, the Truth and Reconciliation Report. I was honored to be in the room when it was delivered. And I don't know if you saw on the news this morning, but Mr. Bennett, Mr. Cameron Bennett, who's been a great friend of this riding and who spent Remembrance Day with Chief Perry Belgerd, as well as Ontario Chief Isidore Day and I in Alderville for Veterans Day. There was an announcement that we have our commitment to Shoal Lake in Manitoba. It is one of, it's been 18 years on a boil water advisory. And part of the reason it is on boil water advisory is because they don't have the infrastructure to get the equipment in to put the water system in. It's not that the water system itself is impossible. It's gaining the equipment there, etc., is prohibitive without a solid road. The ice road, because of climate change, has become sort of challenging at best. There are a number of people who have died going through the ice. So yesterday, we made a commitment, along with the province of Manitoba, to put that road in. And we anticipate that the infrastructure for the water, clean water, will be in within the next couple of years. And as a government, we've made a commitment to, within five years, removing all the boil water advisories on First Nations. And that isn't about as much about money as it is about political will. And I would suggest that a lot of these things we're dealing with, like the Truth and Reconciliation Report committee, is really about political will. And we've made that commitment. So thank you for your questions. Are you commenting?
Any other members of the council? And seeing that, Kim, I just want to again thank you for coming here and giving your first address to council, and let you know that you're welcome anytime.
Well, thank you, and I expect I will be back often. Thank you. Enjoy.
I'll now call on our MP, Lou Rinaldi. Welcome, Lou. Oh, and I do apologize for the sound, the audio system. Apparently, we're having some wireless interference. It's totally, it's totally, that came, and I'll tell you in advance.
Well, thank you very much, Your Worship. Do this inside, is that okay to you guys? I know you've got everybody's back, but it's not that I don't trust anybody behind you.
You're the MP, but I do whatever you want.
Well, thank you, Your Worship, and congratulations on your, and two dollars as well, becoming a warden and being able to counsel Coombs for serving for one year as warden. I never had that opportunity in my 12 years of municipal life, but certainly, I know I work along with many wardens as a municipal politician, and the work you do. And the work keeps on getting more and more and more. So I wish you all the best. And I certainly want to continue the dialogue that I've had with past wardens and past county councillors, that we, you know, that we keep that relationship long. You probably might know that my staff has been trying to work with your municipal staff to try to get into one of your meetings. It's a bit of a, with the holidays in between. So but just to reassure you that I won't be visiting, or try to visit, if you want me to, in your municipal councils sometimes in the new year, sort of between January and February. I just want a couple of things, not to leave some time for some questions. As you know, as I said a minute ago, we had a sort of an extra membership, and I'm delighted to have Kim on board. And Kim, I made all the notes about all the things that you're going to help us out with. Because the province delivers some of those, some of those things, like housing and healthcare and all those good things. And lately, some of those responsibilities were strictly left on the shoulders of the province. And I'm delighted to hear you say that you're going to work with us. I certainly look forward to it. And being a parliamentary assistant of the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, prior to 2011, then when I got relaxed again in 2014, I got my same office back. I go figure. But anyways, I certainly enjoy, and a lot of the things that I do in the ministry, before I talk more locally, is related to the work that impacts you, impacts you each and every day. For example, I'm not sure how much attention we're paying to it, but Bill 73, which is a municipal act reform, a piece of legislation which is proclaimed last Thursday, the last day that the House had. And that's one piece of legislation that was quite deeply involved for the last few months. And some of the highlights that you'll be seeing rolling out is, for example, the municipal, your official planning reviews have been extended from five years to 10 years, with an option that you make that choice, whether you want to close them for the first two years, except municipalities allowed to make any changes they want. But that's a decision you make. And it also opens the road for some potential revenue tools, the province and the whole piece of planning approvals with some new, some new transparent regulations take place when it comes to parks and cash flow of parks and those kind of things that I think are going to help make our communities sustainable for a long, long time. The other piece that I will review right now, as you know, is the Municipal Elections Act that happens after every municipal election. And I had the opportunity to work on that piece of legislation. There's been some, I believe, I could be wrong a little bit, number wise, but 2,000 or 3,000 submissions. And we've been working with AML on the options and trying to make municipal elections a bit more attractive. And that should be in place by, hopefully, the spring available of 2016, so that any changes a municipality wants to enact on in the 2018 election, you have less time to do that, to prepare. The other piece that it does impact the County of Northumberland is the review of the four plans, which is Yoke Ridge's Moraine, the Green Belt, the Places to Grow, and Niagara's Carton. The Niagara's Carton doesn't so much impact here, but the other ones certainly do. And just last week, or the week before last week, the report from the Cronmy Panel was released. And it's got some 87 recommendations on how to deal with, you know, to deal with the future of Green Belt, Yoke Ridge's Moraine, and the Places to Grow, which those are the three plans that are really impacting the County of Northumberland because we're at the edge. So the ministry, minister, we're going to take some time to review those 87 recommendations from this expert panel. And by the way, the expert panel was made up of all cross-sections, from agriculture to developers, to planners, to environmentalists. We had a real good cross-section. So the next piece of the, to move that forward, the minister and the ministry is going to review those 87 recommendations, come up with a plan that's going to take us to the next 10 years and beyond. And that plan won't be finalized until, as another set of review. I'm not quite sure how the review is, the second review is going to take place, but we'll be definitely working with AML, Euroassociation. We'll be dealing with interest groups, and it's through AML and some individual municipalities on an individual level as well. And hopefully, by summer 2016, we'll either through regulations or legislation, we'll move the arse dicks forward. But it was a really interesting review. We had one session here in Coburg, and we had some 3,000 people take part in the 17 consultations we had across the impacted area. I participated, I believe, for 14 or 15 of them. And it was a real sense of wanting to grow in a measure and protect a way that we protect our environment for the years to come. So it's been an inter-ministerial process, and it's been very, very successful. On a local basis, I just want to spend just a couple of minutes. I've been working with a number of useful projects, you know, in the communities, whether both municipal or in the economic development sector. Things haven't changed, things will not change. You got my commitment to keep on working with you on those bases of whatever it is. And one of the things that I would ask you, that, you know, when in doubt, please call, whatever the issue may be, whether it's with a warden or through you as a councillor here, or a municipality, please feel free to use us. Not that I need more work, but certainly, you know, it's something that I think, when we combine our resources and together with federal government, I think we'll go a little further. So I really mean that with sincerity. Please, please use us. I'm not going to prolong any more questions, but before I do close off, I just want to, again, in case I forget, I wish everyone a safe and safe holiday season, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And as I would, and as I've always done in the last number of years, we're very, very fortunate with the communities who are, sometimes you say we have everything. And we do have everything. We might be short, you have to think. But there's also a number of people that don't have what we have in this room today or beyond this room. So over the next couple of weeks, if you can, give a hand up. It really does two things, and I can say that from experience. One, it makes those people feel real good that we're helping. But more, just as important, it makes us feel good to be able to do what we do. You know, one of the things, of course, it's kind of overshadowing that a little bit right now, it's refugees. And, you know, there's going to be hiccups. I think along the way, I think we should be honest with ourselves. But I call as a province, as Minister Hoskins and Minister Chandler spearheading the relocation of those folks in the province of Ontario, sub-10,000 or more. That we're ready for the challenge as a province. Is there going to be hiccups? Absolutely. I mean, it's, you know, it's a huge task, but I don't care. But Ontario, Canada is used to bring in refugees or immigrants. So I think it'll be good for our economy in the long run. But for me, as an immigrant, not a refugee, but as an immigrant, I appreciate what Kim has done for me. And I know these people are going to come within the next few weeks and months. I'm sure they're going to appreciate it as well. So, Your Worship, if there's any questions. I brought staff with me. They're doing a lot more than I did.
It's always good to have reinforcements, Lou. So, yeah, we very much appreciate you coming here today. And I know I speak for all county council when I say that we really appreciate the support that you've given us at Northumberland County and also at the respective seven municipalities throughout the county. And I know for sure that's not going to change. I know your commitment. And we look very much forward to working with you in the future too. So I will open it up to members of council now who may have a comment or a question.
Well, there you go. That's okay. Counselor Sanders, you have the squad.
I just want to echo the same things I said to our member of parliament, which is, this is a two-way street. We've had lots of dialogue. We're as responsible for moving things ahead as you are. And I think when we look at that opportunity, I've never seen a better opportunity for municipalities, given the fact that we have the federal government, provincial government that are aligned with, I think, the same things that communities are looking for. So this is a start. And I think when we work together, we've already started that shared discussions and what have you. And you can see the fruition right away. So lovely to work with you. It always has been. Your dedication is recognized, not only at our level, but in the streets, which I think is very important. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Sanders. And I can echo those sentiments. I mean, I can tell you, I think, that two days after Kim went to the west and you led us to the east, because you know the writing is changing, or it's changed federally, we met to talk about issues that were important to the community. And it's because of those folks, not an issue that impacts so much western Northumberland, they've been working in the writing's method in the east end specifically to align some federal programs with provincial programs to make that place a place to live, work, play. So, yeah, so it's been... You know, I'm going to say, I wasn't going to say this, but I'm going to say it. So the day after the election, one of the media phoned me and said, "So what do you think of the federal election, the results?" Because, you know, obviously, I was happy. You know, this is the politics of it. So please don't take it the wrong way. So I said, "So what's so important to you?" Well, you know, I had a lot of good relationships with both Rick Norlock and Mr. Grant to the east. I mean, we were good friends. We attended a lot of events together. I go, for the first time, I'll be able to talk business, which I was never able to do before. And sure enough, the next day, we did that. So.
That's great to hear. Any other comments? Thank you very much, Lou. And as I said to Kim, you know, you're welcome back anytime.
I'll be here.